Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Convention January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Today we are meeting at one o'clock, which is not our norm, but um but we are meeting there at one. So with that, I will ask uh Allison to lead us in the building.
Hi.
My nation, I'm the God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so for attendance, we have, let's look up Zoom land first, and I see that we have uh. I see we have the sheriff that's out there. We have Leila that's out there. He's in the middle. Is that is that? Major Bashar? We have our county attorney, Pat Conway. Welcome, Pat.
Hi, everybody.
You have our. Stacy.
Hello, everybody.
Both in Zoom land in present.
I logged in with my laptop. That way I can look here instead of go like that.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, we having difficulty hearing you.
All right.
We used to have a separate microphone that was over here.
That was a different one.
Yeah. So I'm gonna move this down here.
Let's try that. Nice. Thank you for putting that out, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Much better. Okay. In the room, we have Chuck Nickerson. We have Robert Bernier, and we have Jude Gates, Allison Kevan Prosky. We have the commissioners, Commissioner Godu, Commissioner Coyle, and myself. And we will start with the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Well, first, I'm going to move to approve the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three public meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
And I move to approve an accounts payable list total of three million, five hundred and six thousand, sixty-seven dollars and seven cents.
Well, seconded and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Let's go to we'll go to liaison reports. And I'm gonna start, I'll start with Commissioner Coyle first.
Sure. Um, over at long-term care, we have um, we've definitely had another couple more positive staff members with COVID and then we're uh, which uh, causes us, requires us to do resident testing. Um, transmission levels still remain high. That was me, sorry. Um, and um, today was the mobile vaccination clinic uh, this morning for those who wanted to participate. Um, the good news is F-two is open, the rehab unit is open, um, including taking um, if we need to take, you know, people who would have had COVID and are recovering. Um, and the mock survey is complete over at the assisted living facility that went well. There's a couple, you know, minor things to work off of, but um, overall going well. Um, over at the Department of Corrections, the population is at one thirty-six. That's a product of a few of the women being moved out as well as we've had a number of state hospital admissions. And uh, there'll probably be a few more. Uh, there's a few people on the waiting list to go to the state hospital. What that means is what we're, I mean, and there's a lot of wait at the state hospital. Um, but what it's saying is the level of acute care that we're, that the COs are dealing with, everyone at the jail is dealing with. I mean, they're um, on a very positive note, we have had four new hires. We have two in the pipeline who are getting polygraphs next week, and then another four in the line for polygraphs um, thereafter, and then another five that are so um, sort of have expressed interest and are starting down the path of of looking for employment here. At the same time, we have not had any attrition, so no one has left. So um, you know, this puts us in a great position going into the meeting tomorrow. Um, sort of that the fruits of the um, stipends as well as recruiting efforts from HR and you um, the, you know, at the DOC, um, it's really coming to fruition. So those are wonderful things. Um, finance over finance office is extraordinarily busy. The ERA P run this week was three hundred thousand dollars. We are going to exceed a million dollars for the month of January. It's just um, unbelievable. I mean, um, and it tells you what the need is. We're still getting a lot of pressure to try to take some of our funds and give it back, give it to the cap so they can keep carrying out their program. Um, you know, we are, I think everybody is in agreement that we have so much need within Rockingham County that um, and especially if we continue at a rate of anywhere close to this, a million dollars a month, and it seems like we're just continually ramping up that the, you know, winter months are gonna we're gonna have a very high level of need that um, I think everyone, we're gonna not give our, take our money and give it back to the caps at this point. Um, we can reassess down the road, of course. Um, otherwise, there's, you know, lots of different grant opportunities and um, Chuck is going to be testifying um, direct on House Bill two oh three and with some edits for RSA twenty-four thirteen C. And that.
Can you just share what two oh three is?
That's.
Thank you, Commissioner. So basically, it's an update to the existing Hillsborough, Rockham County budget RSA.
Okay.
Where right now, as the oddity that the deadline for getting the budgets out, the executive committee members to the, all the towns, to the DRA, to the Secretary of State, is the very same date, deadline date as the Commissioners to fold the public hearing on that proposed budget to go out.
May third.
It doesn't really get the opportunity for stakeholders and those that would be voting on the Commissioners' proposed budget to even look at it.
Right.
So it was some, and also picking up the archaic lan- language of budgets having to be the executive committee proposed budgets, the overall delegation having to have a copy for all members of the delegate at the county courthouse.
Right.
Instead, just to give the requirement to send out the budgets and requirement to make the budgets available on the county.
Right. So it's a movement towards more electronic, like how we all are operating with using more uh, electronic means rather than, I mean, it's just far more sensical with modern technology.
Yes.
And so, and uh, obviously, this later today, we have the uh, CBV G CDBG grant um, public hearing. That summarizes.
Okay.
My report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Godu. What would you like to share with us?
Well, um, I met with uh, four H, the uh, co-op meeting, co-op of UNH co-op extension, had a Zoom meeting last night. Uh, the focus was on four H leadership. I'm getting a basic introduction to uh, what they're all about, what they're doing, and got to meet some people. So uh, that was a positive experience. They're very busy, and uh, I think that they're doing a good job, but I'll learn more about it as we move forward. Uh, there's a delegation meeting tomorrow we should be aware of, uh, on a budget review, uh, one o'clock in the Hilton, I believe.
Should be nine thirty, is it?
There's another one at nine thirty. Is that the same?
Nine thirty is the second quarter review.
Okay, nine thirty, and then there's one at one o'clock?
That's uh, moves, so to me, I mean, I guess they make a different meeting if.
Maybe it's a different meeting, maybe that's. I get so many meetings.
Yeah.
Legislative, who was this from? Oh.
Oh, that's from NHAC.
From Kate. Okay, so nine thirty tomorrow morning for a budget hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, on the delegation. Um, register Kate um, Stacy and um, and Pat Conway are on the Zoom meeting, so I'm gonna let them give uh, updates uh, in their departments when uh, they're called upon. Uh, I I'm still interested in hiring an offer a uh, OPM, owner's project manager, and I'm hoping my fellow commissioners will give it some further consideration. I see it as an insurance policy to our spending of sixty, seventy million dollars. Um, ensuring that we are spending this money properly. So I just encourage you to continue considering that basic proposal. I'm not looking for a big discussion on it right now, but.
Yeah, we're gonna stop the process next week. I think Jude will let you, will announce that she has set up the meeting for um.
Yeah, I look forward to to those updates.
So we're gonna, we're gonna get into those.
Although, you know, I I would be surprised to learn that uh, the architect or the builder would be interested in more oversight. So I, you know, that I, I'm interested in their update of what they're doing, not so much their opinion, because I said that in the minutes. Uh, I'm really not too interested in their opinion about whether they think they need oversight, because like, who would say that?
Sure, yeah.
I'll say?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Godu. Um, so for me, uh, first off, I want to apologize. I sent out an email on HB seventy-five, which um, increased the amount of five thousand to ten thousand dollars. I had announced that it passed. I I made a mistake. It didn't pass. Um, I was, I was actually following the the taped um, committee, and I must not have got the right one, but I thought we were, it was unanimous, but I found out later it was not unanimous, and part of the problem was that the sponsor of the bill didn't show up, and there was no one there to talk about it, so. Um, but speaking with uh, Kate Horian at uh, NHAC, we may be able to squeeze it back in through the Senate side of things, so, but I want to apologize that I got, I kind of got ahead of the process and thought that it would pass. But I was kind of excited about that, but I'm sorry about that. Um, I'm gonna let my liaisons, I I know both Jude and um, and Allison gave me lengthy notes, but I'm gonna let them talk about it. Um, and I I do want to say the Sheriff's Department, there was a small little issue with um, with all the rain and the weather we had. Um, there was some water that that was coming into the dispatch center. Um, the good news is it didn't affect any equipment, which is good. Um, but as you know, with the weather, you know, you're getting ice on a flat roof, and then it gets warm and then cold. Anyone that knows anything about ice dams and stuff like that, I'm not saying it was an ice dam, but this is what happens. The water underneath it will melt before the stuff on top melts, and uh, this is why we had the problem. You know, I did speak with Jude. Jude was on top of it, and I think that um, thank God, we didn't have any equipment that got destroyed, so that was good news. Um, so that's, that's all I have. Oh, one more thing for me. Um, so I'll be heading to Washington in the, within the next couple of weeks. Um, I will have an audience um, of our federal delegation, so if there's any, any department, I did talk to Jason Smith. Uh, and I did talk to Chuck Nickerson. If there's any, any issues that you'd like me to discuss while I'm there, talking to Senator Shaheen, Senator Hassan, Congressman Pappas, and Congressman Custer, um, I will have meetings with them, so just let me know, and I'm happy to pass that information on. So that's, that's all I have. Um, so we're gonna go on to saving non-public audio files discussion. I'm gonna turn this over to Commissioner Coyle. This is um, an issue that she wanted to bring up.
Oh, I mean, I didn't have it.
Oh.
We can discuss it. I mean, we had discussed it. It was a discussion point last week.
Right.
I'm happy to, you know, I I thought it's valuable in terms of uh, just more transparency and exposure, especially if uh, non-public minute minutes aren't sealed, similarly to how we're recording these. Um, these meetings, the public meetings and putting them on Zoom, it would be an opportunity that if a non-public minutes are unsealed that for that or for a portion thereof, that the public upon request could request the mi- the non-public minutes as well, but I, I, you guys had some reservations last week and.
I just, well, did you have, did you want to?
I I I think the minutes suffice for that transparency. The actual recording, I don't think it's, I mean, it's on non-public. They're mostly deep, and then once they're unsealed, the minutes get unsealed, so.
Yes.
I, and I think that I've been pretty pleased with the way the minutes have been uh, developed. They seem to be captured, you know, with what we need done.
Leland does a great job. There's no doubt about that.
I think I've been looking at the synopsis, now being part of the commission and and looking at it. I think she captures the important things.
Yeah, I I don't have much to add to that part of the conversation, but what I would like to add is, um, and this is Commissioner Godu wasn't there, but um, I had brought up the fact that um, in in another world that I'm, that I'm in, um, what we've done in the past on non-public minutes is we review them yearly. We look at them to see if we can unseal them. We haven't done that here, so not for this meeting or discussion here, but maybe for a future meeting, we can talk about that again, because that is typically what um, New Hampshire Municipal Association recommends that you go through it, because there are stuff that doesn't need to be sealed anymore, and for transparency, we can just review it at some meeting and then just go through and say, we don't, we can open that back up, and then people can have that, but um, I was gonna say that if we did the audio part of that, because that would be part of the record too, that we'd have to kind of control that and and there'd be a little bit of logistics with that, but
Okay.
I I feel sort of the same. I think that if we approve the non-public minutes, um, that that would suffice, but.
Okay, that's right.
Um, so, so we have on the agenda CDVG, but that's at three o'clock, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna bypass that for now, and I'm gonna go to number two, um, general leave for long-term care services.
Move to approve a general leave request for a long-term care services employee, CEO with county portion of all benefits to continue for the period of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three through March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended, recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Well, seconded and made and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, Allison, is there, do we anticipate that this will be resolved on the?
Yeah, so I I just want to clarify that the leave request of fifteen days is one nineteen to two nine, which is Jason, so the leave that you would request greater than fifteen is two ten, three sixteen.
Yes.
Yeah. And I anticipate they will be coming back. Um, they kind of have a FMLA with.
Right.
So, yes, they were in their window. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. I mean, nothing. Uh, general leave, long-term care.
I um, I'm just gonna pull this one for a second. Sorry. Um, I move to approve a uh, general leave request for long-term care um, services employee SO with county portions of all benefits to continue for the period of um, Jan- um, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Could you just repeat the dates, because our, our agenda has something different. Did you say one twenty-six?
Six, yes, because the um, there's a fifteen-day um, approval gen- by the ODD, so we have to approve over that fifteen day, which is why the fifteen-day approval was from the tenth to the twenty-fifth, and then we approved twenty-six through thirty-four.
And what was the second date? Was that a change?
No.
Commissioner, so the thirty-first is this is good.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Uh, any further discussion on that motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Long-term care services. See.
Yes, um, I move to approve a general leave request for long-term care. I'm sorry, um, uh, approve a generally request for long-term care services employee WD with county portions of all benefits to continue from, and I'm just gonna confirm the dates. This is. Cool, time, time, okay. From um, yes, from February sixth, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, from uh, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through February sixth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Motion made.
I just.
Seconded and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Weather emergency, P P eight dash four, Thursday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I move to declare a weather emergency in accordance with personnel policies and procedures, chapter eight dash four, for Thursday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at eleven PM, or the start of third shift as defined by the department, through Friday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at eight AM, or the start of first shift as defined by the part, department, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion seconded. Seconded. Any discussion?
I I have a question about this. I have a question about this policy in in general. First, we were asked to approve it, and then the next one, you didn't ask us to approve it. So was that just because you were out?
Um, it's not asking to approve, because you've already authorized Jude, myself, and Jason to oversee the weather emergency. So we just inform you, the three of you, that we've declared one.
Okay.
And then we give the letter, and then we have you sign it, and then it goes back to the ODDs to have them post.
And, yeah. And I think when, um, because when Allison was out, Julie just sent it in a text message in a way to be as an out of respect, as opposed to it is a, our obligation.
All right, that's what I thought. So we're not gonna be asked to approve previously, but we're approving your actions afterwards. Okay, so my other question is, um, what does this cost the county? I mean, are people all, does everybody show up an hour late because you can, or is it real, is it used well, that, like, because the weather wasn't that bad, as it turns out, you know, weathermen are not that good at predicting.
But don't forget, we have a lot of people that are coming from well outside the Rockingham County.
Yeah.
So we had last night, we wanted to very much take into consideration those individuals that are outside, especially the third shift. They travel the fastest to come in typically. So the cost, it's, nobody has taken advantage of it. Um, the ODDs could talk to it. They pretty much, it just gives them the self-assurance that if they're on the road and they have to backtrack to get onto another road, or they're tied up and they're behind the snowplows, that they have time to get in here and they're safe. We want to just make sure it's more of a wellness for them to know we care about them and we're respectful that they're coming in.
So it works, and they're not be taking advantage of the situation.
The flip side of it as well is that the employees know they need to come in, so that they can't say, I'm not coming in, because if I don't come in, I'm not gonna get paid. So we give them the the safety and the comfort to get in here, but we also protect the nursing home in particular, um, to know that the staff is gonna be able to do, to take care of the residents that they need to do as well. So it's kind of, it works for all of us, I think.
Okay, great, thank you.
Further questions? If not, uh, I'm just gonna use, I mean, I'll take a vote on the motion. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay.
E, weather emergency, again, Sunday, January twenty-second.
We're gonna go through, because we have a walk-in on the weather emergency too, so after E, I'm gonna make a motion for the walk-in.
That's related.
I move to declare a weather emergency in accordance with personnel policies and procedures, H dash four, for Sunday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, beginning at eleven PM, or the start of third shift of defined by the department, through Monday, January third, twenty twenty-three, at eight AM, or the start of first shift as defined by the department, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion in this one? And if not, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. This is a walk-in to declare weather emergency in accordance with personnel policies and procedures, chapter eight dash four, for Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at eleven PM, or the start of third shift as divided by the department for Rockingham County Long-Term Care Services um, and Services Engineering and Maintenance, Rockingham County Sheriff's Dispatches in Rockingham County Department of Corrections, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion's been made and.
Seconded.
Seconded. Uh, further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Now we're on to F, repurpose title change for long-term care.
I move to uh, approve a position repurposed title change from RN to Clinical Risk Coordinator, effective April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? None. Uh, motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Personnel non-public, that'll be at the end of the meeting. Uh, long-term care services, Jason Smith, Administrator of Record.
You know, before we do that, I think we should, um, since we're dealing with um, human resources, we need to deal with the courthouse power outage. That was the issue. We have to approve the power outage.
Oh.
Put time off.
Was, do we have anything?
I move to, I'll make the motion if that's okay.
That's fine. I just wanted to know if we had any documentation in our package.
We did.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve a paid administrative day off on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, for those registry of deeds and county attorney employees that were unable to perform work that day, either at the courthouse or remotely due to the power outage, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, this is why we're working on the new building in part. I don't know if the powerages were related to, hard to know.
I just want to know if if um, Kathy Stacy has added that to the big book of issues. Okay, she said yes.
It's hard to know.
All right, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yeah.
I will vote yes. Now we're on to Administrator of Record.
I move to appoint Senior Director Jason Smith as the Administrator of Record to be responsible for the management of the Rehabilitation Nursing Center and the Director of Nursing to act on his behalf during temporary absences.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Now, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. Authorization to act on behalf of.
I move to per- approve the authorization to act on behalf of the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services as submitted by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Motion's been made. Do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coyle?
Yes.
Hampstead Nursing Services Travel Contract.
I move to approve the Hampstead's nurses, Nursing Services Travel Contract and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Jason, just, is it, will this help with some of our?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner. We currently already have contract in place with them, um, but they provide per diem, and because we've been using them so much, it would be more advantageous for us to have a thirteen-week contract for a true traveler.
Great.
Further discussion? If not, a one same vote, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Harmony Homes Update, MOU.
I move to approve the Harmony Homes Updated Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, my only dis- my only discussion is, uh, do we have a reciprocal policy if they have an emergency that, uh, we take there?
Jason?
Yes, Commissioner, there is one in place. The administrator is currently on vacation there, and we're waiting for them to come back, and we'll do the same as.
Great.
Well, a lot of these um, uh, MOUs are automatic renewal each year. Um, however, Harmony um, was not, so we'll be addressing that when the administrator's back.
Further discussion?
Thank you.
The motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Primetime healthcare rate increase.
I move to approve the updated billing rates for primetime healthcare LLC and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Jason, it looks like the only difference is in the CNA rate.
That is correct, Commissioner.
It's just a small. Okay.
Several uh, weeks ago, um, there was a approval for the LNA and RN rate increases, and just recently, they submitted the LNA, and that's what this is reflective of.
Okay.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Next up, Sheriff's Office, bid waiver request, use of opioid fund request approval.
For I move to approve the bid waiver request and proposal from Thermo Fisher Scientific in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars for the purchase of a true narc handheld narcotics analyzer and further authorize us utilizing the opiate abatement fund for this purchase as recommended by the high share.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Uh, discussion?
Yes, I have some. So the issue is, this is, you know, the, it appears that the rationale behind getting this is to make things more expeditious in court, right?
No, that is, that is just one part of it.
But it won't, it's not admissible in court, right?
Uh, correct, but it actually is used to, when you send something to the state lab, you have to tell them what you want to test for, and with a lot of these drugs being mixed or cut with other agents, uh, you may think that you have cocaine or heroin, and so you send it to the lab to test for those items, and if it's fentanyl, they're not going to test for fentanyl, so it would get sent back and have to be resent out. The primary push for this is the safety of the deputies, officers, corrections officers that are coming into contact with some of these substances. Um, over the past couple of years, we've actually had two deputies end up overdosing and have to be administered fentanyl, uh, one during a traffic stop, one through the process.
Narcan, not fentanyl.
Uh, yes, I guess, sorry. Yes, have, we had to administer fentanyl. I took Narcan to them because of the effects of fentanyl. Um, and so being able to, instead of using test kits where you have to remove items from the baggie to submit it to a solution, uh, this, on a majority of these items, it can be tested directly through the packaging and there's no need to remove it. Uh, and if it does test for, if it does show that it's something even more serious than we're expecting, uh, it it's good to take additional safety precautions. And there are some other drugs coming out right now that are Narcan resistant. Uh, there's been information on, uh, some animal tranquilizers, uh, that are not opioid-based. I believe one of them's called Xylazine that they're seeing travel across the country. And that is, uh, not responsive to Narcan, so that that's been involved in many overdoses as well.
But, yeah, I mean, like, you have the test strips and typically when you send it up to the lab, you can say, I want to test it for A, B, C, and D. Like, nobody, typically, as I understand it, when I, like, for our police departments, you don't say only test for heroin, or like, you know, and the lab will do a, you know, negative for.
That's really not the case anymore because the lab's so backed up, they're making everyone narrow the scope. Um, and sometimes they'll only accept a, and a request to test for one substance. Uh, but like you said, the really, it's not, the expeditiousness for court and being able to do some of those things is an added benefit. This is more safety. Um, so we say the jail has somebody that they've taken in and they now remove a substance from. Even, you know, as they're putting in an evidence, they'll be able to test it and know, do we need to take additional precautions for handling this? Is it appropriate to put in the temporary evidence storage or do we have to find, uh, safer ways to handle that as well?
Yeah, but there's test strips to do that.
But you usually, you have to remove some of the product from the packaging to administer that test, which is the very dangerous.
So, um, and then my other question is, um, it seems like you can, they'll only train twelve people to use the, use the device or the programming based on the contract?
Correct, that's what's offered in the contract is, uh, twelve, twelve individuals will get trained on it.
So what happens when someone who isn't trained on it, uh, comes into contact with the substance or has to deal with it? You're just gonna?
The, the goal would be that, uh, we train enough people between the sheriff's office and the jail that only the, uh, people who are certified and trained in it would actually be the ones administering the test. So if somebody came into contact with it or even a neighboring community came into contact with the substance, we could deploy somebody out there that's trained in it with the device to, uh, road test, test it on the side of the road, uh. Apologize, my phone's ringing. Um.
Okay.
But we'd be able to deploy it out there.
And then, um, um, my last question, um, actually, if someone else can go, I just was.
Did you have any questions?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Um. Is this the only device on the market that is available to do this? Because you're asking for a bid waiver. And, uh, and as part of that same question, how do you? How do you and other departments commonly handle this problem now? Is this like the new thing that everybody's using or is, um, is this something innovative?
That was, thank you.
Uh, Tru- Truenarc's been on the market for a while now. Uh, we've had some of the partners in the D E A have had them. Um, there have been times where if we knew a large case was coming up, where there was going to be a lot of evidence that had to be processed. If you knew like a week or so in advance, sometimes you might be able to request it if it was available. But this is the, this is the product that the D E A has been using for a while, has had a lot of success with. There are other drug analyzing items on the market. Some of them don't offer the features of the auto updating. Some of them don't have warranties. Uh, some of them do not, uh, scan the spectrum of as many drugs and products that are out there. Uh, so this one is the most, uh, user-friendly as far as being up-to-date, constantly staying updated as it's able to analyze and come up with new contacts, uh, and different type of algorithms. Because as we know, certain things, uh, especially the synthetic, uh, types of drugs, all they have to do is alter a couple little things and it completely changes the chemical compound and they have to come up with new algorithms on how to determine that. But this is the, this is the device that has been found to be the most reliable about those out there. And the reason for the bid waiver is for this particular model, Thermo, uh, Fisher Scientific is the only distributor of it.
No, no one, this, it's not available anywhere else.
They, they're the sole, they're the manufacturers of it and they do not allow, uh, third-party reselling.
Well, that's weird thing.
Hold on a second, hold on. Do you still have any more questions, Commissioner?
Well, I, I, I'd like to know what other, okay, so what other departments are using this device right now besides the D E A?
I don't know which of the other large communities in New Hampshire, because it is very costly. Uh, I believe somebody told me that Manchester and Nashua has them. But other, the, the only ones I definitely know that are using it regularly in the state are the D E A.
And.
Are you all satisfied? Okay.
Just, I'm telling on that, how come the, in the contract, it talks about third-party distributors? Suppliers.
Is that for the contact solution for the items that don't need to be?
I don't believe so. It says seller, the, uh, that seller, seller products supplied by the seller that are obtained by seller from an original or a third party. Uh, there's all these references to, there is reference to third-party suppliers. Um, my concern obviously is that, and to, I think, this was some of the Commissioner Godu's, um, you know, there are other, wow, this company only manufactures this version of it. There are, in terms of, if you step back, the objective of for safety, identifying, um, drugs without having to ha- contact-free drug analysis. Is there a lot of devices that offer it? So.
I don't think some of the other devices have the, as much capability to scan through packaging. Some of the other devices still require a removal from the packaging to put the, the product, uh, either onto a test strip uh, or other thing that's inserted into some of the other devices that I've seen, so that still re- involves the removing of packaging. Um, but I do have, you know, we did incorporate the letter from, uh, Thermo Fisher Scientific and, you know, for them affirming to us that they were the sole provider of the True Narc, uh, as well as some of their other products.
Okay, so, but so for me, um, two things for me. Number one is the safety of our sheriff's department. That is paramount to me, number one. Um, that's important. We, we just heard from Major that we, we had two fentanyl poisonings and that's scary stuff that's could take a life. Um, number two, this money is coming from opioid abatement money. This is money that's dedicated. Um, so it's specific for these reasons. It's not really coming from, it's not coming from the budget, it's coming from the opioid settlement. And currently, if I'm wrong, Chuck, how much money did we have in that?
We have over a million.
We have over a million dollars that we have to use on opioid-related materials. So for me, I'm definitely a big supporter of this. Makes sense to me. Um, I'm going to be voting yes, but, um, with that, I think we've pretty much debated it. So I'm going to go to, let's go for the, uh, vote, um, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
I am, I know, because I think that there are other, um, it's not a sole source. There are other options out there. I know that this company manufactures this particular model, but there are other equivalents on the market. In fact, I have one right here, the Pendar X ten standoff spectrometer, so.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. To one.
So it fails.
It, it fails because of the bid, needed the bid waiver, so. Uh, okay, let's go on to, and that's it for that.
Um, do we, I guess, there's one more motion, walk-in request?
Want you to?
So why don't we do that? We can do that during, um, department head updates. Makes sense. It's a.
You want to do it now?
Whatever you.
Why don't you do it now and then we can do the department? Because we got.
So I moved to authorize the chair, this is under the Department of Corrections, to, I moved to authorize the chair to sign the Prime Care Medical Inc. Uh, Additional Mental Health Care Services Contract, Services Agreement that, um, was, uh, discussed and approved on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Motion's been made?
You probably.
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Okay. We go to department head updates. I'm gonna, uh, where did she go?
Is she?
I'm looking, who am I looking for? Oh, okay, I can barely see. Let's, uh, let's start with, um, County Attorney Pat Conway, since we haven't heard from her in a long time, because she's usually in court at our eight-thirty meetings, so we'll start with you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Thanks. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, things are going pretty well. We are, we are ve- very busy. Uh, we are sweet. We have a sale of a controlled drug with resulting trial going on here in the courthouse. A couple of our assistant county attorneys, we also have a sexual assault case being tried in Stratford County. Um, apparently, the victim is related to someone who works here in the courthouse. So it's, it's being tried, tried in Stratford County, so I have a couple of assistant county attorneys in Stratford County trying that case. Um, and next week, we have multiple trials and I'll be conducting one of those, so you probably won't see me at the meeting next week. Um, we are doing fairly well, filling out positions for the attorneys. I have one more position to fill and, um, looking forward to one of our lead attorneys, Ryan Alice, coming back, uh, returning from military leave in April, I hope, March or April. Uh, we did receive a resignation letter from one of our legal assistants, um, this past Friday, uh, which is not great because, um, now we're going to have, I think, three open legal assistant positions. So that's, that's getting a bit, um, difficult here, um, because the legal assistants that we do have just have to take on more attorneys and more work if, if we don't have enough legal assistance to support the attorneys and all of our efforts in the office. So, uh, we are looking at applicants and, um, hopefully going to interview some people for that. Um, I think most of you know that, that our, um, receptionist Joy is planning on retiring this year and I think her last day is going to be in April. Um, I really want to have some kind of a, um, function for her. I think what we're talking about is asking the court to utilize the space between deeds in my office just to sort of almost have like an open house for a few hours. Um, and we will probably have coffee and pastry and, and things like that. Um, and, uh, one of the things I was wondering is whether or not the, you know, our food service could provide that for us here or not. Um, you know, obviously I can pay for it with my budget or I, I don't know how that works, but I, I know in the past that, that our food, food service, they have given us some, some items in the past for, for actually for low to no cost. So I, I don't know how that works, but I'm just throwing it out there. Um, and we can talk about it later, but that's, um, something that I thought I'd throw out there. Well, Ms. Joy, she's been, as you, you all know, she's been really, she's been here for, I think, twenty-five or twen- a long, very long time. Um, and she does a great job, so we're really going to miss her and we'll have to fill her position as well when she leaves.
Okay, alright. We'll check into that, will ya? I'm going to go to the sheriff. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So, oh. I think you all know about all the water problems that we're having over at the, uh, at the office and, uh, Jude's taking a good, uh, good care of us up there. Uh, we also got water in my office, my bathroom, a secured closet, a civil dispatch. Uh, water is coming through the civil dispatch, uh, but she's on top of it. I appreciate all the hard work that she does over there. Uh, if everybody watched W M U R last night, uh, they did an interview, uh, with the Rockingham County, uh, Dispatch. Uh, Major was actually the view and, uh, what about Dispatch's Chad? Uh, did the interview. Uh, after that interview, um, we ended up getting five applications for, uh.
Why?
Uh, we're up, we're up to eleven now.
We're up to eleven applications. Uh, we have it. Just, a previous dispatch that went part-time, it took another job someplace else, has applied to come back for full-time position. So hopefully, perhaps in the next couple of weeks, we might be, uh, we're get, we're getting there. So I, I really appreciate all the hard work that the commissioners have done, uh, to give us sign-on bonuses. Uh, the higher, uh, grade, uh, eight, um, um, a person that helps, uh, we, a, a recruitment, a recruitment for recruitment. Uh, it definitely makes the Rockingham County, I think you're going to see with the way the recessions coming in and all these high-paying jobs, people are going to be, uh, looking to leave those jobs to get secure jobs like at Rockingham County. But I appreciate all the hard work commissioners have done. Uh, if the major has any other questions, I will pass it on to him.
Major, you got anything? You all set? Okay, how about Catherine Mann? I see her there. She, does she have anything to add?
Nope, I'm all set, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Let's go to, and go to Jason Henry.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Really comfortable.
I am. Still, uh, doing best to get my knee surgery, make it to work here and there and then, um, you know, it's going well though, we're able to walk on it. Um, as Commissioner Quill said, it's going very well in recruiting. Um, I want to thank, you know, Autumn for the, uh, for recruiter and H R. Um, I have a staff member who was an ex-recruiter in the military, who has been working with Autumn. Just came with a nice flyer with a Q R code in it and my staff has been sharing it all over the place on social media, telling people to come apply. It's a great place to work. Um, and so their push with, um, the recruiter and the others is, that's, I think, why we see a lot it rising on what we're getting in here, plus also the pay. Um, a huge rise on a lot of, um, females applying to us as well, which is fantastic. The two. They're going next week, both females going to the polygraph. Um, so that's all been positive stuff. The only thing I have, uh, it really is to ask, um, when the sheriff way back when did the bid for their, um, new bulletproof vests, um, I'd asked the commissioners back then, is it okay if I also tag on to their quote and get the same price? Because they already quoted it out. I just want to make sure that is okay, um, because we are looking to buy four vests and it's going to cost us five thousand and five dollars, uh, which would be over the, the bid specs. But we're buying them at the same price that the sheriffs did already when they did the, when they bid it on it. So I just want to make sure that is okay with the commissioners. We have it in our budget to do it.
Oh, dude, you just read my mind. That was my question. We have it in the budget.
We can, we're buying piecemeal, we're buying piecemeal. We really need about, about twenty, um, but we can afford four this year and hopefully more next year. Um, some of our vests are ten years old. It's, you know, we need to start getting back to where we need to be. We have transports and everything else. We have people doing home checks over pre-trial and dental services and stuff, so, uh, they should have been a long time ago. They're coming forward and replacing these, uh, you know, like, um, most law enforcement. But we can start with the four now that we can afford out of the, um, uh, Lieutenant Norton's budget.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Um, I don't, Commissioner Coyle? Did you have?
Do you want to?
It might be on the same lines, or you might be saying. Maybe just a vote to amend the original awards to include department corrections.
Exactly.
At amount of five thousand.
When did we, when did we do that?
Sorry, I was right with you. I, I like to. So that way, because what essentially by doing, amending the original award to the sheriff's department, it's saying, listen, we went through the bid process and this is where we came out. So this would just be adding on that too. So.
Okay, that makes sense.
I make a motion to amend the prior award to the, uh, uh, sheriff's department for, um, for body, uh, for vests to include four vests for the Department of Corrections, um, an increase of five thousand and five dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. You're all set, Jason. Did you have anything else?
Thank you, that's why I have. No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to go to, uh, Kathy Stacy.
Good afternoon.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you? So a couple of things I want to, uh, talk to you about, um. You'll probably be surprised to find out, we have a secret bill come out this week by Senator Gray to put probate back on the table again.
I saw that.
And in it, um, the register is not, uh, employee of the judicial branch but is under the, uh, under the heading of the Board of Commissioners and the delegation can set a salary. Eh, anyway, um, you know, obviously, we're opposed to that. D O J spoke in opposition, dickhead um, is drafting some type of amendment to it, but obviously, um, we're going to make sure that we're on top of this so that i- it, it just can't happen. The liability is huge. So you can have the judicial branch training this person to give advice to people who want to file probate stuff, but yet the liability is not on the. But yet the liability is not on the, on the judicial branch, but on the county. You know, I just wanna let you know that, um, I testified last week on several bills. Um, and most of them, I think three of them were I, well, two of them were ITL. The other one, I'm working with the uh, members of the probate bar and trust bar to um. Work and fix the language. It's the uh, transfer on death deed to see if we can get it passed. We'll see if we can, I'm not really sure. But um, I, I made that commitment to um, Representative Lynn that I would do that um, behalf of Jess Edwards. Um, but other than that, the, the setting up of a independent registry of rent, rental information. I was ITL'd, um, and there was another bill with regards to, it's, it's, it's crazy, some of the stuff. The other bill is, um, Commissioner Coyle will be interested in this. They wanna make it illegal for anybody other than a natural person to own a piece of property in New Hampshire. So if you're a company, an LLC, any, any like that, um, the penalty is the court can take away your property from you. And, and give it to the town or the county.
Property as an LLC?
Yeah, yeah. You have one, you have to prove that, with, you have to, you have to change it within two years. And you have to prove to them so that doesn't cheat to the state that within the last year, you've had it and been marketing it. With a realtor on the uh, for the past year in order to avoid them taking the property. This is a state rep out of New Market, New Fields. Her name is Reed. Representative Reed, she's got a whole bunch of bills with regards to rentals and, and, and that type of thing. But on that same note, I wanted to um, tell Chuck Nickerson. During the testimony on a couple of these bills, there was a woman who says that she's come to Rockingham County and other places as well. To meet up with uh, people with regard, you know, renters. But she talked about fraud that's happening, that she's aware of, that people that she's representing are involved with. That the landlords are actually upping what they're supposed to be paying for rent. This whole scheme, and I'm thinking, you're actually talking about that at a hearing before the state legislature that's being recorded? So, I mean, it was interesting and you may wanna see it because she actually has a, a particular group name and you might be familiar with it. But I, I thought that was kind of interesting that she would actually offer up that testimony. Um, so that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
For keeping an eye out on the legislators for us.
Thank you.
Then go to Jason Smith.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, as Commissioner Coyle reported earlier, that we do have several um, staff members that have tested positive. And a few of them um, were in resident-centered areas, which we had to do contact tracing. And thus will be monitoring and testing um, over the next ten days. Um, we also held the COVID vaccine clinic today. We had twenty-two participants, which was um, good. And uh, let's see here, Michelle is at the Board of Nursing meeting today, so I'm flying solo. Um, so I will provide the best clinical guidance and update that I have. Um, as uh, let's see here, Fernal Two, our rehab SNF unit is now open, which was fantastic to uh, have open this week. We also had the Seacoast Provider Networking Group, um, had their meeting uh, on that particular unit off to the side. Uh, there was over twenty-five individuals that participated, which was really nice to see. Uh, local community stakeholders from skilled nursing facilities, assisted living hospitals, home care and such, uh, participate, which was really, really great to see. Um, the uh, mock survey that happened this past week, last week, um, over an assisted living. Um, went very well. There were just a few uh, items, small items, um, for example, like an expired spice. Um, that was recommended, um, monitoring uh, two minutes between um, providing eye drops. Um, so minor things and so something that we can fix. That's very simple. Um, other than that, I just wanted to address uh, staffing. Um, you know, as you know, staffing continues to be a challenge. We have multiple agencies that we partner with. Um, most recently, I did send this to Human Resources that uh, there's a community that's thirteen minutes away from us. That are, that is increasing and have increased their rates. Um, starting LNA is twenty-one fifty, MNA is twenty-three fifty, OPN thirty-seven fifty, RN thirty-nine fifty. That's significant, um, extremely compared to our salaries, um, where a lot of these salaries are, uh, that I just read off. Um, are at the high end of our scale. Um, different community, but still providing the same licensed nursing staff. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that um, staffing continues to be a struggle. Um, and due to that, we have fifty beds closed, two units closed, um, because of the short staffing, um, that we do have here. Um, with that being said, uh, with our current census of um, uh, one twenty-four. Uh, we have uh, a hundred and fifty-two beds that could be filled with that. We, there's only twenty-eight beds available. Um, so some interesting news with that, um, because we do admit a lot of skilled residents for Medicare Part A. Uh, in the last quarter, we had forty-eight admissions and forty-six discharges. And so a lot of those residents had either passed away, they transferred home or into other assisted living or community-based services. Or back to the hospital. So we are admitting and we do a significant job with admitting our skilled residents. Um, but residents do uh, also leave. So I just wanted to indicate that uh, as well. Um, very good news in our assisted living occupancy is at forty-two with a total bed capacity of forty-nine. Um, we have four people on um, our preferred list and they're just pending um, move-in arrangements. So, meaning we have three open beds left to fill. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Gadoo has a question for you, Jason.
So with regards to the uh, salary comparison that you're making with the, this other community, that I guess shall remain nameless for the moment.
Oh, it's, it's uh, Riverwoods right down the street from us.
Oh, one of my favorite places. Been there many times. Um, so I mean, that's obviously a high-end facility, almost as nice as Rockingham County Nursing Home.
We try.
Uh, my, my, my question is uh, number one, are they union like we are? And secondly, how do the benefits compare? Uh, the benefits package that they offer is that comparable to the benefits package that we offer? Um, you know, I mean, I imagine we're gonna be bringing this, these salary concerns up at budget time. And um, obviously, we need to be competitive with what else is going on in the area.
Absolutely. So to answer your question, they are non-union. Um, and then the second question is, I'm not sure what their, their benefit package is. Um, I do know that it's a nonprofit. They offer four oh three B, um, and they have a comparably good uh, health insurance program. I'm not sure about their time off. Um, I do think that we uh, are better, um, but I do not have, from what I understand. Um, from uh, individuals that work over in that community. Um, with that being said, I don't have the exact um, plan summaries in front of me to compare.
Okay, and, and I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but uh, it is gonna be a question as we move forward to budget time and we start asking these. Because I, I personally feel the benefits are uh, particularly good that we offer and we need to try to uh, make sure that. Employees understand that they're getting more for their money or uh, spend less on, on the benefits and uh, pay more on salaries, like the competition. I don't know where we should be, but it's just a.
Those are, that's an area that we've been concentrating, well, we need to concentrate on, we're, we're starting to get there, but good points. Jason, do you have anything else?
I do not at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Drew Gates.
Good afternoon, everyone. All as well, Lynn and Mary and Megan Solvo. It has been all about Mother Nature this week. We started with power outages and single chasing, which was a concern for the equipment in the nursing home. We, we got around that. The power outage was about twenty-eight, twenty-nine hours long. Which is really long for us. They, PSMH, EverSource did so much work after the ice storms years and years ago. That this is like really meaningful for us. We have to test our generators. We have to, um, we have to run it for four hours annually, the, the ones in the nursing home. And we were concerned about having to bring someone in to like load bank them because they weren't gonna be running enough. We have to worry about that anymore. We're all set. Um, we did have a number of leaks this morning. Um, we're looking at our response time on third shift. Is something I think we could be doing a better job of all of, truly, it was a bit of a, a perfect storm because of the snow and the melting of snow. The drains were overwhelmed. They were failing. They were clear. They were just overwhelmed.
What, what was our staffing level on? I'm sorry to interrupt.
One person on the entire complex.
For third shift?
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to look at that stuff too.
Well, I've had an opening on third shift for three and a half years. I mean, that's, you know, staffing is definitely. We usually, we used to run two folks always on third shift. And so we had double coverage a couple, three nights a week. That, that hasn't happened in years. So it's an issue, but at the same time, I, I just wanna make sure they understand there are resources. They can call or other people want to help them. The sheriff was kind to say that we were on trouble, where we're certainly prying very hard. Um, some of the water that made its way down into the jail was actually through a bathroom that we didn't even realize was leaking in the sheriff's department. So it went through the sheriff's department down to the jail. It wasn't roof leak. It was just persisting from the sheriff's bathroom down. So it's just one of those things. Um, we had a little bit of an issue with heat in Underhill Building yesterday. We have two pumps that run that system. One of them's failing. So now we're running two pumps to make sure that we have enough pressure. It'll be fine until we go through budget. But it was a little, it got cool for a little bit early in the evening and then, you know, by god, temperature, everybody knows, we've kind of scrambled it to repair. Other than that, um, with regard to the building, the um, the well drillers had a terrible time getting out through the muck. They kept getting buried in. They ended up using an excavator to pull the drill right out back there. So it was pretty crazy, but they are making good progress. Um, this morning they had, they're, they're pushing through an eighteen-inch casing. That um, was at about forty-two feet, still in place. So it's moving nice and easy and that's exactly what they had predicted when they did the original um, test well. So we should have some, we should be testing water before too much longer and sending data to D E S. So that's, that's big. We're excited about that. Um, I did invite Warren Street Harvey in revision to your meeting next week. Took him in and gave an update and they um, confirmed that they were doing all of them. So they'll be here. I don't know, um, I'll talk to Layla and see if we should move on to the other girl, because it might be private. I'm here for that anyways.
Makes sense.
Yeah, they're gonna personally come or they're gonna?
Yeah, I think so, if that's okay with you.
That's fine with me. Yeah, just, you know, if we have more than nine people in this room, we have to use the other rooms.
As you wish.
Yeah, so if, you know, how many people are they gonna send? That's probably four. I mean, you, yeah, I would think.
And I assume a lot of the department heads will wanna attend in person too.
So let's do that then.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll get with Layla and we'll set it up to get into the hill.
Thank you very much.
That's it? You sound like you are very busy. Yeah, Allison.
Hi, um, employees will be receiving uh, mailing from us about the educational sessions that we're gonna be doing. Both onsite and Zoom, many options for many different times, even on the weekends. So that went out to our four hundred and sixty-two employees. Um, we've had our last UKG kind of transition meeting that took place this week. Um, and we're going to be moving over to the implementation phase and have our first meeting with the implementation team on Monday.
Did you say it was a UK?
UKG for our dimensions and pro for our uh, payroll, time and attendance and human resources platforms. So it's been moving around. It's been moving along very nicely. Um, and we have met with the sheriff's department um, on the um, transition, we called it transition meeting already. And we've invited the Department of Corrections to our next meeting to talk about a couple ideas and thoughts and wanna get input from them. So we're rolling that out and expect to hit all of the departments when it comes to certain areas, just to get some feedback from them. Um, I think we've, I've got an unemployment hearing appeal that we weren't planning on that has kind of ebbed up. Uh, so I'll be dealing with that and um, our recruitment on the seventeenth, we had three correctional officers and activity aides. And a ca- uh, assistant county attorney, a universal worker, one weekend at RN and the accountant for the Department of Corrections. And on the thirtieth, we're scheduled for an RN and one correctional officer. And we've been, I've been holding meetings with the recruiter on strategic ideas that we'll be bringing for, to board next week. And also to look at budgeting in the next process. We're already starting to think of the budget process. So that's all I have and thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Robin and IT.
I do not have anything new this week.
You're kidding. What is it?
Um, Robin got the wifi and all of the connections over at the Carlyle for us. That was great. We're super appreciative. So you do have something.
Anything else, Robin?
Thank you, Robin. Functionality, great.
And last but not least, Chuck Nickerson, I'm sure he's got nothing. I'm just joking, I'm joking.
As was mentioned before, uh, rental systems is just very, very busy. Um, as far as on the fraud situation, I mean, I have part of the fraud is supposedly if landlords are increasing rents without giving the proper notice. I know that just from having looked at, at um, cases, that yes, landlords have been increasing the rent. But I don't know if they've given proper notice. I mean, we're not.
No, we don't check that.
And I'm not checking as far as, I'm not sure if there's like a percent increase that they're capped at. You know, because some of them might just be claiming that, oh, it's inflation, so I'm just gonna increase it, whatever. Now, can some maybe be unfortunately abusing the system that's out there as far as for assistance that, oh, I can just increase it. Cause I know this person qualifies, I'm just gonna get more money in. And just again, blaming it on inflation or whatever started for increasing that rent amount, you know, some tenants. Um, we have done our due diligence, I think, in trying to head off fraudulent cases wherever we can. We ask more questions than I believe that they does, does in processing claims.
And the treasury does know, they've had these FAQs that was brought up. They wanna make, they are concentrating on getting this money out the door, correct?
Yes, they push, 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 and that doesn't necessarily make the GAO, the government accounting office on the federal level, very happy with the program. They were happy. I had a two-hour interview with them some months ago and they're very happy with the stuff that we take here at Rockingham County. So, yeah. Um, again, this very busy, this run, it was three hundred thousand after four days claims went in. It'll probably be about three to thirty-five, three to fifty thousand, probably when it's all said and done. Um, we're hoping to, you know, get, you know, uh, fill the difference. Um, turn it open, uh, for the M K extension positions, the portion that we have that we had. I guess subsequent discussions, uh, it's probably the minimum hours or commitment that we're hoping for. Um, so again, with the volume that's coming, it might be that, well, I know, maybe, but we're gonna need another position. I work at Allison, you can mention it. You know, I mentioned about the need for this data, entry person and, and someone who's a little bit more skilled with systems. As far as, you know, like a temporary position that's either full-time or thirty hours a week or what have you. But this for a limited amount of time, you know, while the program lasts. Um, so I'd be, I think, very valuable because again, there's many of us in the office are doing positions that. If we had jobs that never included anything about.
Right.
Rental systems or administering grant program like this. But, um, but we're doing it, it's, I feel it's having great value for Rockingham County um, residents. As Commissioner Coyle said, there's another attempt by the states, this time through the hip to housing plans. Very basically have us a SHF, the process of claims that they already had in their queue. Because they didn't run the program when the, for the runout period. And that's just going to basically shorten our program and kind of limit what we can do. And we already know that we turn around cases anyways a lot faster than SHS, so.
You know, we, I don't mean to cut you off, Chuck, but I wanted to make it known that we reached out to the cap programs originally. They told us, no, we can't work with you. We have to pivot quickly and do a few things to get ours program up and going. And now that our program's up and going and working well, it's a little ironic that they're asking us for help, you know, and it's like, I'm sorry. But, you know, we did come to you originally and you said no. So I, the way I see it is, is I, I just say we continue with our program.
I guess for the sake of the Rockingham County residents, it's probably good that in the end they turned us down because. They did not turn in the ERA one money like they've been. And that's like, what happened to be part of the state's problems that they turned in the ERA one monies. Instead of dealing with two different sets of parameters, eligibility parameters, which we have, ERA, ERA one and two. And so then they're just left with the ERA two program, nearly half forty percent of your allotment given upfront.
Right.
So you had to apply with treasury to get subsequent disbursements of part of your sixty percent. And I don't, I guess maybe. I guess many things didn't work out with the feds on that level for the state, so that's, well, it's been a little bit more hassle for us, I'm glad that we did not turn, do the same thing, turn in the E R A one monies, we held on to it as long as we could process what we can under that, and then we then will tend with the E R A two.
Well, what, I mean, really, what it's done is like just the amount that we've been, the continued help. I mean, we wouldn't be still helping a mil, that million dollars that went to people, we wouldn't have been able to do this past month, the but for you guys, and that's like all a hundred percent attributed to you, Chuck, and everyone else in the finance department who's worked so hard, I mean, that is like real tangible contribution to helping people in a way that is so amazing, it's just amazing.
And as you were, you know, every month at September a quarter end, it's always really big on filings, the terms for grants and the different reporting and yeah, it's so different, we have many deadlines coming up, so I'll be giving any different reporting, whatever, by the thirtieth, the thirty first. Including that is an ARPA, a data operating one. So a lot of our updated um, twenty twenty two down the year um, revenue loss from that, and so I'll be filling the board next week what that will be. Because I'll add to the existing twelve to thirteen million dollars that's right now allocated for revenue replacement. And as I mentioned before, you can utilize that kind of allocation of ARPA monies
Right.
to make different, so not to get get confusing or anything, it doesn't increase our allotment of sixty, it just
it just puts it into the separate category of, it, there's no, for lack of a better terminology, it's no string dependence.
Yeah. Yeah, you you have a lot more flexibility, a lot that's that you have to report back to the feds on.
Yeah.
Um, but so again, you know, right now we have a solar array under that, right now we saw a few million dollars additionally beyond that for other projects, um, we have basically some minimal products that have been improved by the commissioners under that. Um, this quick update, I know that we're gonna put around an email about that E C D G, the
Yeah.
Energy Efficiency um, block grant that D O E runs, the primary entry on the bedside. So the county is eligible, we can allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The ending application window is the end of April, I plan on um, uh, having the county apply in February. So over the next several weeks, I think the application process is only in the portal, which requires that Fed Connect registration, which I've done on behalf of the county, and if I can hopefully print off what the application documents look like, I'll present that to the commissioners, I'm afraid that might all be in the portal. So I might need like an authorization, the commissioners to apply on behalf of the county, but again, we can use a hundred percent of those monies towards the solar array and then be able to re-purpose that quarter million dollars for other opera projects.
Yeah, perfect.
And obviously, deny out for all sorts of other grants. Um, that's why one request I'll have as far as the meeting of our special delegation as far as, you know, maybe some more flexibility on use of of ARPA funds or or other funding. Again, this overall very busy. Um, just a reminder again, as far as uh, we do have that, I have Commissioner Godu said that quarterly meeting tomorrow at nine thirty. I think it should go smooth, there is one line I can transfer, but it's a very simple one. Uh, more discussion probably had about the proposed supplemental preparation.
Yeah. Yeah, and my understanding is, uh, Jason Henry has talked to um
The former Judge Lynn.
Judge Lynn, and so they're already, they're prepped up, so they're ready to go for tomorrow, to to give the presentation, to help us with the presentation.
And uh, Colonel Hurley does have motion language, whether it's going to be representative of Lynn, or if it's gonna be Ken Weller as as a chair of the delegation or what have you.
I mean, the great news is, we kind of, we kind of set the, set the stage early on, we let the delegation know that this was important, so they, there's no surprises.
Now, now the good news is, the amount needed for the supplemental preparation, because able to get updated numbers has decreased by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Can't go wrong.
It's it's good and bad news, because the bad news is, the reason why we were able to ask for less is because after we had implemented the hundred twenty five dollar stipends, unfortunately, they didn't bring in a net positive, I think we actually had a net negative after that. So as a result of the continued staffing issues, that actually freed up more budgetary plays.
But that's okay, because it's it's a true reflection of what's needed. We want to get through to July, and then we can tip in the new budget, we can set this, set the stage.
And I think it's, we have data now, we get, I mean, what we go in with is, we put in that one twenty five and we were net negative.
Yeah.
And then we went to where, you know, to where we want to be, and, you know, in a it's not unforeseeable, I mean, we have those four that are gonna be, you know, still have to go to the polygraph, and that's gonna be some delay from the administrator. But we could have be up ten
That's awesome.
Ten in a month's time, so, I mean, that's real data that shows where, you know, this, this is working, so that's nice to go in tomorrow with that specific data and and others in the pipeline, and it's it's really a good thing, so.
Yeah, I think the executive committee likes seeing those results, that just from one month of those, you know, enhanced stipends, like you said, we want to be.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it actually, I think it looks good. I think they're gonna be very happy, so.
And I'll stop there, I mean, obviously, we're just very busy.
Yeah.
Charles upgrade and everything that's going on.
I I don't see anybody from the member of the public, uh, but I'm gonna ask if anybody, any member of the public wishes to speak, now is the time to hit star nine on your phone, and I don't see anybody, so I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be done there. So it is pretty close to two twenty, they're gonna go into, we're gonna go into a non-public here, and then after that, we're gonna come out. We do have a three o'clock, we're gonna come back into public for a three o'clock C B D G grant. If people want to chime back in and watch it, they're more than welcome to do so, but um having, having gone through everything, I wish everybody to have a great day and we'll uh, we'll see you soon.
Um, I'm gonna move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety one A, call on three Personnel Matters.
Motion's been made.
Two seventeen.
And Commissioners, can I just say something really quick, I forgot to mention this earlier, um, I sent you got you all an email about a right to know request I received. Um, so I I don't think we have to discuss that now, but I just want to make sure that it's on your radar, because we have to get back to that person in a timely fashion. Um, I did talk to Commissioner Go Do about it briefly, just to give him a little bit of background. But um, I'll be at the budget meeting tomorrow morning as well, so I don't know if you want to talk about it a little bit then, but.
Yeah, so just refresh up, refresh the memory on the email, do we, we want to get a legal opinion on?
We, um, I think at the, initially, I think we're probably all in agreement that if you want to um, proceed proceed the same way you uh, identified in your email.
Yeah. Agreed.
Okay.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Okay, very good. So we're, uh, motion's been made?
Yep.
And do I hear a second to go into non-public?
Actually, I'm gonna move, take a five minute recess, just uh, before we move into non-public, or you guys?
Why don't we just go into non-public and then we can? Yeah.
I already gave a second.
Yeah, so motion's been made and seconded, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're going into non-public, who you?
So, um, I move, what did you say?
I didn't say you can make the motion.
You too, I think it makes a motion to come out of non-public, in non-public.
Yes, we're out of
Non-public, and we're now in public.
Yeah.
So now we make the motion in public to seal.
Go ahead.
I make the motion to seal the minutes with respect to the force issue, I moved the motion to seal those indefinitely. And on the second, um, I make a motion, I guess I'll make a motion to seal both indefinitely, because we don't have a definitive date.
Motion's been made, and do I have a second?
You finished with your?
No, I wasn't. And we don't have a definitive date on when these issues will be bru, resolved, and they affect personnel matters. You have to give a rationale.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, great. I just printed these off, just so that we do, this is um municipal, municipal association. Uh, it's five, thought it was interesting, so I just made a copy for everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Donna.
Hi, everyone.
How are you?
I know. Donna, have you met the new Commissioner, Commissioner Godu?
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Been so long since I've been here.
Does it?
Would you like us anything to eat or?
Coffee, if you want, or snack? We have ten minutes before three.
Come in the afternoon, not my rule.
It's alright.
It's hard, because like all counties need in the morning.
Yeah. It's just easier because you have department heads and they have reporting. But that's okay.
I don't stand personally. Why three o'clock in the afternoon is any different than ten o'clock in the morning, I don't get it.
We actually need eight thirty.
But
No, but your point being
But my point being, if you want us to have meetings at night, because they're more accessible, that's one thing, but three o'clock.
Three o'clock is not any more accessible.
No.
Back to the public.
To the public, right, and in fact, less uh, less accessible for all those who have tried, have to pick up their children from school. Right, who have childcare responsibilities, because this is pickup time, so it even further eliminates people who might have some time.
I don't get it, it's it's no early afternoon, it's late afternoon.
Yeah.
We can do a late afternoon to get a half a million.
It should be.
Should we be in recess?
We, yes, let's be in recess, so I think we could pause this.
Uh, motion that we
Well, we're gonna recess for ten minutes till three o'clock.
Okay. Aye.
Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Yes, aye.
Donna, do you?
We're um, we're gonna be discussing a community development block grant project, um, and what I need to do is I need to open the public hearing on proposed Eppings Meadow Apartments in Epping, New Hampshire, it's a C D B G application. Do I, do I need to read the whole thing, or?
I'll read it, how about?
Alright, that sounds good.
Maybe earn my keep here.
Alright.
So I have to read it because they're very deep around there. Community Development Block Grant, C D B G funds are available to municipalities for the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to five hundred thousand dollars annually is available for economic development projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars for housing projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars for public facility projects, up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in emergency funds, up to twenty five thousand dollars per planning study grant. All projects must directly benefit a majority of low and moderate income persons. This is a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to five hundred thousand dollars in C D V G housing grant fund. Of the grant funds, up to twenty five thousand dollars will be retained by the county for administrative labor compliance costs associated with the project. Four hundred and seventy five thousand of the funds will be sub-granted to the Housing Partnership, a nonprofit corporation. The Housing Partnership, a nonprofit corporation, will then loan the funds to an entity to be formed that the Housing Partnership, a nonprofit corporation, will hold a controlling interest in, and the loan proceeds will be used for the acquisition and or construction of Epping Meadows Apartments Project located at thirty five Exeter Road in Epping. It will be thirty five to sixty units, the thirty five is the minimum it's gonna be, so while we can say at this point, depending on the moratorium, um, of new affordable housing. The loan from the Housing Partnership, a nonprofit corporation, to the entity will be formed that the Housing Partnership, a nonprofit corporation, will hold a controlling interest in and shall be for a term of no less than thirty years with an annual interest rate of zero percent. No payments due until the maturity date of the loan, all to be evidenced by a promissory note and secured with a subordinate mortgage lien on the property. The project conforms with Rockingham County's Housing Community Development Plans goal of encourage a balanced, diverse, safe and sanitary housing supply, which meets the needs of all age and income groups in the region, which is a short-term goal.
Okay, uh, I'm, since it's a public uh, hearing, uh, I would ask for public comment at this time, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this issue? Last call for public comment, is there any public comment? Yeah, I hear no public comment, so do we need to close the public hearing?
That's what you do.
Motion to ma, they need a motion to close the public.
No, you just close the public, make public, and then I make the motion to move.
No motion, you just
There's no motion, you just
You just declare it closed.
Yes.
It is closed.
Okay, and with that, I'll make a motion, I move to approve.
Sorry, can we open the next one?
Do you want to do, I was going to make a motion on the first, and then you want to open both, okay, that's fine, that's fine, okay.
So now to open a public hearing on the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, Donna.
Every time we ask for C D B G funds, we have to adopt this, it's a form, and we have to adopt it even if it doesn't really apply to what we're doing, which today it doesn't really apply to what we're doing, so just like to start with that. This plan outlines measures under the Uniform Relocation Act required for C D B G projects that involve any displacement or relocation relocation of persons or businesses. If the county were to undertake a C D B G project which involves displacement or relocation, they would follow this plan. Plan outlines measures they would take to find comparable suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated. No displacement is anticipated as this is new construction.
Okay, I'm gonna now ask for public comments. Is there any public comment? Last call for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, and now I'll make some motions, so on the first motion, I move to approve the submittal of the C D B G application and authorize the chair to sign on this sorry, sign uh, and submit the C D B G application and uh, and upon a right approval of the C D B G application, authorize the chair to execute any documents, which may be necessary to effectuate the C D B G contract and any amendments thereto.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, I'm gonna take a roll call, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes, three zero.
I move to adopt the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan.
Okay, motion's been made, go here a second.
Second.
And seconded. Um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes, three zero.
Thank you.
And that's it, right?
Right.
Congratulations.
That goes in and it has to be in by Monday, and then we'll know by April.
Great. Well, I wish you the best of luck.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck with that project. Well needed.
That you, you people are, you know
They need housing.
Willing to.
They need housing.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry.
Both, that that's with non-debatable, so
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye, to adjourn?
We can.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned.